Okay, I'm showing 6:31 if everybody in the seats can get started. Okay, City Council meeting for December 20th, 2010, and panel now coming to order. Please remember the times indicated, next agenda items are approximately start time only. Please turn off all cell phones and pagers for duration of the meeting. The City Park, please hold your role.
Are there any like questions?
Yes.
Mayor Natale?
Here.
Mayor, Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Push the button, please. Snyder?
Oh, okay, thank you.
Councilman Lina?
Here.
Councilman Benson?
Here.
Councilman Carson?
Here.
Councilman Teeter?
Here.
Councilman Johnson? Councilman McElhany?
Here.
Councilman Buller?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. Can everybody please rise and bow this side of the chair and say your thanks.
Mr. Mayor, if we could also keep George Henderson in our thoughts, he passed away yesterday morning, and he was a very dear and dear friend of mine, and it hurts.
Let's witness to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Snyder? For the beginning of audience introduction, would you please make introductions for Food Bank? Will you do that now? I'm sorry?
Do you want to introduce the Food Bank now?
Okay, it's not on the agenda anyplace, correct?
Uh, no.
Yeah, this would be probably a perfect time to let them be able to leave or anything else.
I'd like to introduce Lily Rhodes from the House County Food Bank and her guests, me, Johnson, Honey and Carol.
Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to be here today. Want to thank you so very, very much for the very generous donation that you made and the donation that First Transit made. And to show our appreciation, we have the Superstars Certificate of Appreciation for public city employees. And for you, Lee, we have a buzzin' beyond for First Transit. Thank you.
Thank you. We actually had a small little display out there today, and we came in through the lobby, you saw sat there such a few hundred pieces or something. And that'll be going through our House County Food Bank. This was another great showing for the employees, showing that they actually reach out, pass over their jobs, so very nice, thank you. Okay, if who has the mic, will Jess's mic round, please?
Ms. Butler?
Danny Thomas?
Danny Thomas.
Captain Towne.
Yael Center?
Jean Lefol.
Joy Bishop?
Laura Ring.
Karen Keat, Parks and Recreation?
Ray Thomas, Public Works Department?
Scott Sebys?
Martha Zepset?
Chris Kramer, Commerce City Planning?
Steve Jensen, City Partner?
Joey Lawson, North C O G?
Michelle Del, and Martha Felton?
Chad Kilwell?
Joel Starbuck?
Carl Shillman?
Ms. Ryan Cordiero, Government Relations?
Brittany Morris, Director of Economic Development?
Ross Sibley, Police Department?
John Howard, Information Technology?
Thank you very much. The next item would have been citizen communication, but since no one signed up, we're gonna move right on to approval of minutes. There's two sets of minutes before council's meeting for approval. The first are the meeting minutes for the meeting of November 1st, 2010. I'll now entertain a motion, Ms. Teeter.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, would you approve the regular meeting minutes, November 1st, 2010? Council seated.
Mr. McElhany, second. I have a motion of second to approve minutes for November 1st, 2010. It's a discussion, seeing none. I'd like a voice vote at this time, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Second set of minutes before council this evening, approval of minutes for the meeting of November 15th, 2010. I'll now entertain a motion, Ms. Teeter.
Yes, would you approve the regular minutes, meeting minutes for November 15th, 2010?
Mr. McElhany?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes for November 15th, 2010. It's a discussion, seeing none. Request a voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. There's three items on the consent agenda this evening. Council is reminded that these items can be removed from the consent agenda for discussion purposes of the request of a council member. Does anyone wish to remove any of the items from the consent agenda? Okay? Not moving to a motion to approve, Mr. McElhany?
Move to approve consent agenda?
Yes, Snyder?
Second motion?
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Will the City Attorney please read the titles?
Title of Resolution 2010-68 reads as follows: Resolution approving access easements to private generation and transmission association Inc. Title of Resolution 2010-72: Resolution authorizing intergovernmental agreement regarding provision and funding of juvenile assessment services by the wind. Next item, Resolution 2010-73: Resolution approving grant of easement to Public Service Company of Colorado for the provision of electrical service to Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge, West Gate area, and water remediation well pumps. That concludes the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and a motion and a second. City attorneys, read the titles. Request a roll of all votes, please. Mr. Benson?
Oh, I punched it, it didn't take.
Vote is AEs. Consent agenda is passed, thank you very much. One public hearing scheduled for this evening. I'll now open the public hearing on Z 781-02-04-06-10. Well, City Manager Jerry Flory, please invite staff to review this case.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Steve Timms from Community Development to present the side.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Would you, before I start, I would wish the council Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. So we do have one presentation tonight. This is a zoning case for a property in the northwest corner of 104th Avenue and Chambers, applicant Shay Holmes, and the request before council is a reclassification to parcels and a reduction in the site setback for partial uses. So this particular property is directly on the corner, 104th Avenue to the south, Chambers to the east. The current zoning is governed by the Reunion P U D zoning. The comprehensive plan does call out to be commercial, and it is out of the floodplain. There is the floodplain, the Second Creek goes directly to the north of this suburb area. I'd be on the updated comprehensive plan this past year. That red is commercial. This C is a community commercial designation, meaning a greater intensity of commercial development at this interchange. Some photos of the site, there's not a whole lot there right now. This is looking north on Chambers. This is looking directly west and on the property. This is looking directly east across Chambers, and this is looking south with the first bank currently on the corner there on the southwest side. So a little history on this site, this property was A and S back in the city in 1997, 2000. It was rezoned as part of the Buffalo Hills Ranch P U D. Subsequent amendments to the zoning after that in 2002, it was renamed Reunion. And then in 2004 and 2006, several amendments to the Reunion's zoning document focused on school and large-scale retail locations to the zoning. Special note, the applicant is requesting to update this zoning to make this land more attractive for potential retail users, large-scale retailers in particular. So this is going back to the planning commission here and earlier in the month, but you can see on the left here what's currently allowed via the zoning, and then on the right is the proposed zoning. And so what we have is we're looking at two areas, AI and AL. Basically, we're looking at shifting this line here up a little bit, and then we're changing the AL classification from MU or mixed use to DP2, which is Business Part II. The area up here on the north side of the property would remain Residential II. That's not being changed as a part of this application. A couple of things to consider as part of this, again, the major change, the Business Part allows large-scale retail, so that means retail greater than 80,000 square foot in size, in addition to a full range of office and entertainment facilities. Other uses remain the same, single-family, multifamily, small commercial office, all those that were previously allowed before would be allowed under the Business Part II zoning. A little bit about the commercial site setback reduction, currently they're allowing a five-foot setback, they're requesting a zero-foot setback. That would only apply for commercial users, and what that accomplishes is, if you take a look at shopping centers today, they typically have an anchor and they have some inline multi-tenant retail space. Typically, there's multiple ownerships associated with those, and by having that zero-foot setback, you can have those right next to each other. It maximizes efficiency for the overall shopping center layout and design and for ownership and financing. The change from mixed use to Business Part II, as we've already mentioned, is necessary for attracting large-scale retail in this corner. Without that change, before council tonight, frankly, quite frankly, large-scale retail could not operate or could not locate there. This intersection of two arterial streets, like Chambers and 104th, is a properly designated community commercial in the complex and also the transportation plan that was recently updated. Large-scale retail is unable to locate south of 104th Avenue because of the XL power lines. This was an issue earlier for Reunion, but also some other developments in the area. Originally, Big Fox was gonna locate south of 104th Avenue, but we found through market and through changing dynamics, that the distance between 104th and the power lines just was not adequate to accommodate. As a result, we've had to readjust and reship some of those priorities now on the north side. And then the site setback reduction is a logical request for commercial shopping centers governed by Oregon Westminster, Aurora, Denver, have this type of practice in place. So on December 7th this year, the planning commission did a peer testimony. They voted five to zero for this request to City Council for recommendation of approval. So that, this request is here before council tonight, and staff will be glad to answer any questions that council has. Questions, council? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to testify in this particular right? Public hearing will be closed. There's some little visiting person that just keeps pushing. Okay, I'm not closing the public hearing, entertain a motion to accept the findings and recommendations of the planning commission. Mr. McElhany?
Move to accept the findings of the planning commission?
Mr. Buller?
Second motion.
Okay, so we moved in second to accept the findings and recommendations of the planning commission. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, may I have a voice vote, please? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. I'll now entertain a motion to approve Z 781-02-04-06-10, Ms. Snyder?
Yeah, I got that long one. Move to approve, Z 781-02-04-06-10. Council seated.
Ms. Teeter?
Second motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve that long one. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Buller, you have discussion, bring your hand. Mr. McElhany, same thing. Just the other one, okay, Ms. Teeter?
Yes, I just want to let Shay Holmes know how that we are a city of Commerce City. They have you and your upscale building and all, and wanted just to share that with you. You have a very high reputation of quality builders. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second, we've had a discussion. Will City Attorney read the title?
Title reads, in order to approve the P U D zoning document entitled Amendment Number Four of the Reunion P U D zoning document, has here two as exhibit A, governing the property located at the northwest corner of 104th Avenue and Chambers Road, Commerce City, Colorado.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. City Attorney, read the title, request a roll of all votes, please. Vote is AEs. Motion passes, thank you very much. Okay, there's one resolution that's not included in consent agenda because it requires a separate voice vote. It's Resolution 2010-71, a resolution approving incentive agreement. Mr. Larry, do you want to bring anything up on that or go ahead to council? Invite council, okay, Ms. Teeter? Okay, no discussion? Okay, no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I didn't know.
You were testing me, weren't you?
No. I didn't know if you wanted to have the discussion at a level. We are prepared to present.
That's, that's what we were looking for. I just figured I missed a step someplace.
I think you're correct.
It's okay.
Mr. Mayor, tonight is a significant night, I think, for staff and all of the city and certain something that the council has been looking at for quite a while. It's, tonight we have an incentive agreement between parties of Shay, King Supers, and the city of Commerce City. And we are looking at moving forward in a timeframe, and I'll let Ms. Brittany Morris go into detail of that. What you have tonight is an incentive agreement, this is the culmination of probably about six months of conversations, weekly meetings, very detailed discussions about how we wanted to approach this and how we wanted to make sure that sort of timeframe and milestones were met. And the, it's very difficult to not get overly excited while you're in the middle of a discussion of this type of topic. But I think everything is moving along very well. I think with this significant agreement before us, I believe that we will soon see supermarket in the north. And I think all three parties involved in this are committed to move forward in that fashion, so I'm always positive in the way we move about this, but there are not unreasonable deadlines in this. We worked diligently to identify what the issues were that are here for, and come to this tonight. So with that, I'd like to probably have Brittany Morris, Economic Development Director, go into some more detail with the contents of this agreement, and then probably have representatives from both King Supers and Shay in residence.
Good evening, happy holidays to you all. Brittany Morris, Director of Economic Development, and I'm very pleased to be presenting to you tonight the details of the incentive agreement with Shay and King Supers for the northwest corner of 104th and Chambers. In short, the total incentive is $1.94 million, of which $1.44 million will be going to the store, to King Supers, and that's $1.2 million in sale and use tax rebates, and then $240,000 worth of Freco water shares, which I will get into more detail in a moment. The developer incentive for this deal is $500,000 to Shay Properties. The source of incentive funds are a rebate of building permit and plan check fees for construction of the store, a rebate of sales and use tax for construction and ongoing operations at the store. And lastly, as I said, the Freco water shares, up to 20 Freco shares will be available for the store's use, and those are valued at $12,000 apiece. The fee and sales use tax revenues are divided up as follows. Thirty-three percent of every 3.5% of the sales and use tax we collect will be going back to the Reunion Metro District, and this is really a significant public improvement that they already put into the Reunion area. After we have paid the 33%, we bated that back to the Metro District. It leaves us with 65% of the 3.5% to be divided amongst the store and the developer as follows. Seventy percent of the 65%, which is estimated at $171,000 per year, will be away to King Supers. Thirty percent of the 65% will be going to Shay, enough estimated at $73,000 per year. The remainder will be retained by the city, which is estimated at $25,000 a year, until we reach those aforementioned totals, and that, we believe, will take about seven years to complete. Now, granted, that is based on the store growth, it's projected right now at seven years, that's how long it will take to rebate. However, the store does incredibly well, that timeframe will be. How we are going to do this is store incentive will be paid over time based on performance. Like I said, the developer incentive will be structured as follows. Because capital is key in this marketplace and to make this deal possible, we will be putting a million dollars into an S growth account, which will be established within 30 days of the store obtaining a building permit. The developer can draw on the S growth fund, which is advanced to the Metro District for public improvements, including those public improvements along 104th Avenue and Chambers Road. The city is entitled to all interest earned on the S growth account, you'll be happy to know. Store incentive is then basically reassigned to the $500,000 will be rebated back to the city. So we're putting up a million, but as I said, the developer incentive is 500,000, so anything that's drawn above that amount will be paid back through the percentage of the 65% that will be being rebated back to Shay. Not to get even more confusing. The conditions are performance dates on the contract. The site work for the store must begin by August 1st, 2011. Installation of plowings and foundations shall begin by September 6th, 2011. Construction of public improvements begin no later than 38 after the installation of these plowings and foundations. And the store must be operating and open to the public, whichever refers earlier spacing, 15 months after issuance of building permit, or October 10th of 2012. Other information about this store, this is slated to be a King Supers marketplace. It will be around 123,000 square feet. This is one of the larger prototypes of, well, the largest prototype of King Supers, and it was sold, other goods and services, other vendors, groceries. This is expanded from the traditional grocery store. I do have copies of letter of intent from King Supers to purchase the parcel from Shay. And with that, I do have a couple of individuals in the audience, John Keller from Shay Properties, and Joel Starbuck from King Supers, who would like to stay a couple more seconds for me. If that's okay.
I don't think we ever wanted to see someone as special. Mayor, thank you for having us tonight. King Supers is very excited for this project, as Mike said, this is gonna be one of the first marketplaces in the prime range of June. We're very excited it's gonna be located here in Commerce City. I just wanted to give my hand, tip a hat to Jerry and Brittany and Michelle though as well, their enthusiasm and professionalism in managing the project through this department. So, thank you again, and looking forward to moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Why don't we let hold up?
Good evening, I'm John Toll, Robert Shay Properties. Also like to wish you all happy holidays, and also point out that my Christmas list is God would have W W what I want for Christmas. On top of that list was, of course, the King Supers, relocated in Commerce City. We've been working very hard, and I do want to reiterate, your staff, Jerry has led the charge here, and Brittany and Michelle have really, the enthusiasm was a great way of putting this, but more importantly, I think, is just the attitude of your team. And I have said in very many public meetings, no one, no economic development group matches enthusiasm in yours. So thank you for having them, and thank you for letting them loose on some of the retailers that we want to get into our service. We are excited, of course, to have King Supers in our center, we think it would be great community, and we could not have done it without this providing effort, so thank you very much. And unless there's specific questions about either King Supers or my Christmas list, I'd be glad to answer any of them, or anything else I could talk about.
Okay, Ms. Teeter?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. What a beautiful Christmas present. I have to drive 25 minutes each way to get some butter, and I'm down. Thank you, King Supers and Shay Holmes, for having the courage to be the first ones to take the opportunity to build this grocery store, because it'll be a loss for the everyone. You'll never regret doing this, it'll be very successful, and thank you again.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sitting up here, I actually might be versed in this here as maybe, I'm not happy. We've been waiting for this for so, so long. It's very emotional moment, actually, it really is. And so I just want to say thank you so much for working with us and for the team, you know, Brittany, Jerry, everybody that worked with the P U D team, you guys were fantastic, everybody for working together to make this happen, and so I just, I think you, you know, it seemed like enough, but I promise you, you won't regret this, and we're just, this is a Christmas present you could have given the city, so thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Benson.
A lot of echo most remarks, I represent more to try where this store is going, and we need, that's the number one question that I've been getting from the last four years, three and a half years, I guess, is when are we gonna get a grocery store? So now, I guess, this is a done deal, those contracts have to be signed, right? This is public information, and it's gonna be a done deal once those contracts are signed. Yes, I mean, that's the first thing, it will be a done deal if the contract is signed. It evolved in a little bit to form, and suggests that it's done when it gets to this stage, but there's been a lot of work put into it, King Supers have done a lot of work. We feel pretty good about it, we certainly wouldn't be here. Thank you.
Would you have any objection to, as far as documents are signed, me contacting everybody who lives in the city to help on their grant, which is no later than October 1st of 2012?
Well, since you're the politician here and not me, I'd be glad to call you, if you did what you want.
Okay, absolutely. And they're gonna be very anxious for you to have that news, and we, yeah, we'll do so, more so than anybody else in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? We have, I'll hold my whole word. Ms. Carson?
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that you work so hard on the building site. I know heart and soul have been poured into it, and I wonder why King Supers, you have a dear... a dear place in my heart. My father did majority of his life with the King Supers manager. A lot of my relatives are still with Kings. I grew up fishing in Kings Ranch. So I know our citizens here at home right now making our grocery lists, so we will all be shopping there, and we are big shoppers in this town.
I just want to echo those thoughts and say thank you to King Supers and Shay Homes. Thank you, and happy holidays to you.
To the entire team, Brittany, to the team, Jerry, to Joel, to King Supers, and to the team from Shay, thank you very much. Great to be here, about the collaboration, new cooperation leading in this, and look forward to watching the next page unfold, and hopefully come out of the ground with King Supers.
I just wanted to thank our team as well, Jerry and Michelle. We also had the help of Steve Timmons, Darren Sterling, Chris Kramer, and Ray Connors as well, to help us get to this point, as well as our financial team, with Roger Tinkelman and our legal team, with Bob and Ray Graham.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I'll now change the motion at this time. Ms. Peter?
Yes, with great pride and happiness, I approve the approved Resolution 2010-71, approving the incentive agreement.
Ms. Mayor?
I happily second the motion.
And with the second approved Resolution 2010-71, I refer to this special. Name and number, say trade.
Title reads, Resolution Number 2010-71, truly consenting for bring.
Motion is second. Say trade for the title, very requested voice, vote please, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, same. That's probably just 20 of them all here. Okay, there's just one ordinance on First reading, and it's ordinance 1848, an ordinance amending various sections of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address or cancel any of these particular ordinance? If not, any discussion can cancel. Mr. Murray?
I did have a couple of questions about the amendments that we're getting to the Revised Municipal Code. Particularly, there's one provision that bans drug paraphernalia, and I was wondering if that is, if the language in that provision is compatible considering the recent developments of this council, allowing medical marijuana facilities in certain areas of the city.
I can answer that. Okay, sir. If for King's to drug paraphernalia that is illegal under state statute, so it's not in conflict with the actual city council, it is previously taken, it only would apply to paraphernalia that was illegal under state law. And what it does is allow then the issue to be litigated in the municipal court rather than having to go to the county court or state court in writing.
Great thinking. Any other discussion? Now, on our due, I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance 1848, approved the ordinance on the first reading. Move to approve ordinance 1848 on the first reading. That's busy. Mr. Murray?
I have a question.
As we move to the second, this is very clear discussion. Name and number, say attorney, press here to the title.
Title reads, An ordinance amending various sections of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code.
Okay, motion is second. Say attorney, start the title. Okay, we have a second essence, ordinance section 48, approved on first reading. Next, we move on to council business. First one, we have discussion in action regarding comment letter, RTB, and fast tracks funding. Mr. Flannery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Mr. Gallagher is going to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. If you recall last week, Councilmember Matt LaDamy and the mayor brought up a discussion on what's been happening with through NADA and the Metro Mayor's Caucus on the comments to RTB on some of their outreach and what to do with the 305 million dollars that is potential savings from the EBOB project, and their discussions about future sales action initiative. Also, on, as we mentioned last week, on Friday, the mayor's managers for AdCom, the executive committee of AdCom, also provided support around the comment letter, basically along the lines of what has been discussed with NADA and we discussed last week. Before you, in your package, is a comment letter that I put together in response to our discussion last week for the mayor to sign it, for council to approve, providing comments from Commerce City along the same lines. And basically, it is saying, before you, before RTB spends money in the southern portion, we need to spend some money in the northern portion, including the North Metro Line, in response to the $305 million and the potential sales tax. We've been silent on the amount of sales tax. I think there's lots of polling, lots of ideas that there should be one tenth, two tenths, three tenths, or four tenths. I think what we've been seeing lately is more people leaning towards the one or two tenths of a percent, that would be something RTB would be taking up. On your screen, on the screen, and also at your place, I placed a map that actually, we had discussed with NADA, we did some update, and it really illustrates, if you look at the green circles, that's the money, and where it's been spent, and it looks like it's all south. If you look up at the north, there's very small circles of green, lots of kind of a brownish color on the screen, and we've got a lot of the lines up in the northern areas. So I think this picture kind of speaks for itself that we need to provide to RTB some information that maybe they spend some money up in the north. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, your comments, Mr. Murray?
Right here, the first green circle connects to the Metro Area, that $100 million North West Rail, that is. Does that give a kind of allocate for that?
I think that's just been allocated. I think what's been spent, or what they're thinking about spending will be some of the bus rapid transit, and a little bit of the rail will give it to like 90, 72nd Avenue as a part of the current project, but not the entire North West Rail. So it'll get it to about 92nd. As soon as it's picked yet, it has been allocated.
That money is available to you.
Any other comments or questions, Mr. Council? Name and number.
Mr. Gallagher, you needed to rule for council to sign the letter. Yes, I'm talking with the city attorney, a motion would be nice, and you got the letter ready to go for your signature. And I talked, we spoke with RTB about getting it to him tomorrow, and they said that would be fine.
Mr. Flannery?
That is, since I would move, the council support, approve, another, I got it.
Ms. Benson? Second motion. Motion is second, to approve the letter is written. All votes, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, same. Motion passes. Mr. Flannery, whoever takes care of that, Mr. Gallagher, or whoever, I guess, but thank you, Mr. Gallagher, for keeping us up on those items. Okay, next item is your request by Commerce City Historical Society for funds for year one. Before we get started on that, I want to make an apology and state that I am not smarter than any fifth grader, because my multiplication tables were absolutely horrible, I don't know where they came from. And one of the things to kind of make up for my lack of math skills, what I would like to do, and I checked with Mr. Gallagher, and it's okay for this, I would like to give over $600 of my discretionary to the historic, to help pay for this particular item. Mr. Flannery, I'll turn the conversation over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is, is being brought back as a result of a letter, some information that was presented, I think, last week. The lease was presented two weeks ago. Last week, we had a discussion briefly on letters submitted by the historic society. This is an actual follow-up to that, correct information, and I'd like to have Ms. Ron Cordero present it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Yes, as Mr. Flannery said, the discussion last week was around a letter that the historical society wrote the mayor and council asking for funds to cover expenses of water, gas and electric, telephone, security monitoring, any maintenance on the furnace, and the insurance premiums. And we tally that, it all added up to approximately $52.26, more or less, for the year. As you can see in your council communication, our recommendation is that that fund can come out of the legislative line item for council. There is sufficient in that line right now, and it has to be spent by the end of the year. I'll take any questions.
Any questions? Do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question about our personal funds. Can we transfer from those personal funds, such as the mayor is doing, to this project?
As long as the individual council member authorizes that transfer, yes.
Then I have, my understanding, five days left before that move.
It's not roll over, right?
No, it's not roll over.
Perhaps, yeah.
So can I, at this time, request that I make a donation or transfer of, I think I have like 1,400 in that account, can I put that for the historical society?
Since the historical society qualifies as a nonprofit corporation, it's authorized to expend any city funds, no matter where they're allocated, for that purpose. So, yes, maybe that, authorize that to be done.
And would I just state it now?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Peter? And then Ms. Mayor?
Well, I would like to do the same thing. I don't know if you just want to ask everyone if they would like to do that, but I would, unless, except I need $20 for certain one checks, but other than that, I think I have about 500 in there. I would like to do that as well.
So that would be everything in there with the exception of $20?
Right.
And that would be the same for Councilwoman Carson, everything in there? Period.
Okay, Ms. Mayor?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. So would that mean that any 501(c)(3) in the community, it don't need remaining proceeds that we have to cause, it's left in our, because as I understand it, we only have five days left to spend that money, right? Basically, or whatever it is until the 30th.
Otherwise, yeah.
It does not roll over, right?
Right.
Okay. So we could check our balances with, okay, so then I'd have to authorize mine be split half and half, and I'd give half of what I have left to community enterprise, and the other half we don't need it to the historical society. I'm not sure if I can see what that amount is. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Bullock?
There's a discrepancy here. In the lease, under utilities, the water is already paid for, so if you take that cost of the water out of these totals, the cost is 41.24 instead of 55, 52.26. In the lease, on the section eight, utilities, it says, leases should be responsible for sole costing expenses for all utilities, circuit defense premises, for the exception of water service, which the city should provide at its sole cost. So I don't want it to be paid twice, I just would like that discrepancy to be noted.
It, it. I apologize, I didn't see that in the lease, but certainly, we will make sure we don't pay the water twice. And I think the total amount for the year, what we approximate is about $1,100. So that's $1,100 that come off of the 52.26.
Right.
Yes, sir.
That one would be a problem. Okay. Ms. Benson? I'll also note that the balance in my discretionary account to the historical society for this year. Okay? Your answer?
I guess at this point, most of it is covered, just the allocations as far as anything that we've covered, it seems, whether that house is allocated for another type of security or not.
Good. Anything else? Thank you. That's pretty clean, what's that? Next item, shall we need a motion, and Mr. Mayor?
No, the motion should state that the funds up to whatever that amount is, will go to the historical society.
Right, right.
And then if they have any other 501(c)(3)'s, they will need to make that with Ms. Hallwell or Ms. Flannery, someplace along the line, to make that happen. That's not going to happen from here.
That's beyond the scope of this, with this motion.
Yes, so this motion is strictly to take the funds as they were given, up to the amount necessary. At that point, those numbers will be moved back to the council member to do with, as is seen by legally.
Correct, that is correct. Now, just one qualification, I have a vision there. When I speak of 501(c)(3) corporation qualified, that is correct, except it has to be for a public purpose for the city, so it can't be a 501(c)(3) that's only due to business, say, in Denver or Colorado Springs. It needs to be a 501(c)(3) that provides services for the benefit of the citizens of Commerce City.
Yes. Okay. Ms. Mayor?
Okay, so, Mr. Gallagher, community enterprise, which is the one that I want you to see happen, that my name, they do qualify as 501(c)(3) that, I mean, they do tons of stuff for the community, so that's why I think them for half, and the historical society for the other half, so that's okay? Okay, thanks.
Okay. Did you also want to make a motion?
I will happily make that motion as stated.
Is that okay? I mean, you can word whatever it really needs to say. Mr. Matt LaDamy? You want to second it now? Mr. Murray?
Second the motion?
Second the motion? The motion is second. Any discussion, Mr. Bullock?
Yes, I may be a little bit confused, and so I want to get this cleared up. The request by the historical society for funds for one year from the city is the funds that they are requesting coming from the city, and the funds from the city council people in addition to it, or?
Place up.
Okay. So I think the motion needs to be clear on that account, because what they asked for and what they're giving, what you made a motion for are two separate things. The motion you made is the request, and it didn't say the request from the city council members, it said it's a request from the city. So I'm trying to make sure that the motion that you made doesn't get convoluted with the funds that anybody requested spent from their funds.
Well, I understand the motion, and I'll make sure it's in the minutes correctly, namely that city funds that we use to satisfy this request, and the source of city funds will come from the discretionary funds that has been indicated by city council.
Okay. From the individuals who mentioned that they wanted to give.
That's right.
And also, if, my question is, is it enough to cover the request?
It's more than enough.
It's more than enough for it. Okay, so my motion stands as it was explained by the city attorney, Gallagher.
And Mr. Benson, do you have another comment? No, that was what I was going to. Okay. I forgot I said that it was not enough for the city, and our party, but it's more than enough, that's fine. The motion is second. Your failure, you make it look pretty, so that they'll get what they asked for. All those in favor, signify aye. All opposed, the same. Motion passes, thank you. Next item is on the 2011 Murphest update. Mr. Flannery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Caroline Key, Parks and Recreation, is going to present this document.
Carolyn Key, Parks and Recreation, is willing to present this topic.
Seems funny, a few days before Christmas, talking about the Fourth of July.
I know. Honorable Mayor, members of city council, it is never too early to talk about the July Fourth celebration. As you can see by taking a look at the council communication that was provided for you, the city of Commerce City and the Colorado Rapids have worked cooperatively since 2007, believe it or not, introducing what has become the annual Fourth Fest celebration, held on July 4th. For the 2011 MLS season, the Colorado Rapids have requested Sunday, July 3rd, for the Fourth Fest Rapids soccer game. In general, the MLS did not play games on Mondays and Tuesdays, and that's primarily due to giving players adequate rest in between games and/or time for travel on those games. So in order for us to look at continuing to work cooperatively with the Fourth Fest celebration with the Rapids, they need to look at in the years that the game falls on a Monday and Tuesday, having that celebration the weekend prior, which would be the Sunday or Saturday prior to that. It shouldn't be an issue with Wednesdays, it wouldn't be an issue with Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, or Sundays. So therefore, that puts us in a position for the next two years, 2011 and 2012, in working with the Rapids to power July 4th celebration on that Sunday or Saturday prior to that game. Staff wanted to bring this to council's attention, because it's important for us to be discussing this at this time, because we enter into our agreement with the Rapids right after the beginning of the year, because it's important for us to secure our entertainment, our activities, all of that has to be done early in January to make sure we have those activities available for participants. So we're here tonight, want to present you with the opportunity that we have before us regarding the upcoming year, 2011, and then 2012, and get your feedback and input. I do want to share with you all that traditionally Commerce City has always shot a fireworks display on July 4th. In the event that we didn't shoot a fireworks display on 4th, it would do the incriminating order. However, I would tell you that after some discussion among staff, we are recommending that we continue to work cooperatively with the Rapids in continuing with the July 4th Fourth Fest as a cooperative agreement, and considering working towards this exception for 2011 and 12. But tonight, we're here to get your feedback before we enter into any sort of agreement here.
How much, Mr. Council? Mr. Moreno?
Carolyn, I actually have a question, because I have a little bit of the agreement that we have with the Rapids regarding the Fourth Fest. How is that, as I mentioned, in terms of entertainment and fireworks, is it just like kind of a cost-sharing agreement, or how is that?
It's an agreement that we intervene to annually. So the agreement, I don't know if I see who's responsible, we have some responsibility with the activities and the cost of activities, the Rapids also share in that responsibility, the fireworks, there's been a sharing in the actual dollars expended, and then we, they're also sharing the costs for police, for staff, all of those.
Great, okay. Any other comments? Here's to make a decision, if you're looking for direction, if it's okay?
I'm looking for your thoughts on it.
Okay. For me, Fourth of July is really cool, it's a nice day, but keeping the kids up late on Monday night, keeping the parents up late, everybody's going to be cranky the next day. I don't have any problem with that, but it's just my opinion. Mr. Moreno?
I don't have any challenge today.
Uh, Mr. McAdams?
No challenge.
And it is Peter?
No challenge, I'd actually like Saturday better, because Sunday I have to get home to work.
It sounds like there's no problem at all. Work with the Rapids, get back to us when you make a decision. I don't see anybody here having any challenge with having it a day earlier, if it works, especially when we share the costs, and if we split it, we're not sharing anymore. Is there a comment that we need to hear, or? No, I just, it was an inquiry on whether or not, just giving the feedback that Carolyn Key was adequate, or she needed to have a definitive decision by way of a motion. She said it was adequate what she has, and then she'll be dealing or talking to the Rapids, and then coming back and letting them know what the final decision is.
Yes, really, what I needed was if council had any concerns regarding this, now what happens was the Rapids, as well as, when he's their partner, or entering into this cooperative venture, are at the mercy of the MLS once they approve the schedule.
Yeah.
This is their, the Rapids' number, their priority request is Sunday, July 3rd.
Okay.
And the nice thing about that, Kathy's, the next day's the holidays, hopefully you don't have to work on July 4th. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is administrative council business, and remember, this is something that you are asking council to take some type of action on. It is not reports, and it is not requests for service that can be handled on c)(3) government. Mr. McAdams?
We are, in need of scheduling review discussions with Mr. Gaylor, Mr. Flannery for first half of 2010, while we are still missing submissions from several council members. I need it importantly, get that to schedule as soon as possible, to ensure this is on the docket, this is early in January, you can propose that be used in a format similar to that we use, including the reviews for the second half of the month, where we use time prior to the Monday night council meeting, to maximize scheduling efficiency, if that works. And so we ask that, Mr. Flannery, if you can have the scheduling team look at appropriate Mondays, after the first of the year, that would be great, and then we'll see if any support or comment from council will make it.
Mr. Benson, your comment? How about that? Okay. Ms. Peter, Mr. Mayor, council, about that? Mr. Moreno, about this particular item? Okay, Mr. Moreno?
Just wanted to say, in full support of making sure that we complete the review, personally getting to have that sit-down time with Mr. Flannery and Mr. Gaylor as soon as possible, so I think early January is absolutely appropriate.
Any other comments on this particular item? Okay, seeing none? Uh, Mr. Benson?
Yes, I've heard, I think this is the grapevine or rumor, about something that I've heard about maybe a year or so ago, about somebody coming in to be a concessionaire, or leasing the golf course, or selling the golf course. I'm hearing rumors that they think that they've got five or six members of this council that are going to vote in there. And I know that's not true, but I'd just like to find out what's going on, if anybody knows what is going on there, because I know when they contacted me about a year or so ago, I said, "You need to contact the city manager, and you need to present this to the council." And that's been over a year ago. Well, what is going on with that? Mr. Flannery, do you have a comment?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The individuals did come to, I believe, the council during that process, and I appreciate you, Councilman Benson, referring it to staff. We did have conversations with them, but as many conversations that come up, the tangible numbers and the tangible information around it was not there, so we said, "Please go get that information and come back and provide it to us." That took months, and in the meantime, they had more conversations with council, and nothing really came back except a portfolio, and the portfolio was more of a, I guess, it was a little bit more than marketing piece, but not what you would want to look for in a document with the detailed numbers. We have never said to them, "We're not interested," we've never said that we're really interested either. We've just said, "The door is there for you to come in and talk to us, and at some point, if there is an interest, we'll bring it to council, and see if the council has an interest, we'll do the same." But we haven't gotten to a point of any tangible, solid data.
So you can say, "The ball's in their court, and they want to continue with this discussion, the ball's in their court," and submit it right into you, and then you present it to the council?
Correct. They left us some information, I believe, in September. We got back to them, let them know, let them know that there was more detail and what that number looked like. Part of, I mean, I can go in, we can do a presentation to council, but part of the information that they're looking at as far as revenue is, is really not there, because it's dead service to us.
Well, I'd like to have a presentation, as long as they, there's something to present, but if they haven't come back with a proposal that you think is even worth presenting, then I guess it'd be a waste of time.
Maybe, maybe one of the questions I think to council is, if there's an interest in that topic, that we might go out and actually put it out on the streets and do a request for information, or a request for proposals, where we get some proposals and have a number of different entities responding to the request, and then have a presentation on that.
Is that the way that we normally work, or we waited till we got a firm proposal from somebody, and then put out an RFPs in order to, I guess, make sure that we were getting market value for whatever it was we were going to be doing? Because I'm not saying I'm for or against this, if somebody wants to pay $50 million or whatever, but I don't know what it costs, but I don't know, there's some money from the golf course, I might be for that, but I don't think that's going to happen.
Yeah, I think it's typical, what happens is the, if an item comes to council of interest, and there's significant interest on council, and directions given, we would go out and do a, probably a proposal, and look at all of them, and then have a competing-type bid process to at least look at them, and again, never really pulling the trigger to go forward until the council get that direction.
Right. Thank you. Ms. Peter?
Yes, I have an idea about when it's time to come forward with the King Supers, that in the newsletter that's sent out, or the newspaper, and you can put, "All nine of us up here are equally in support of work for this," along with the ED department and the management department.
Absolutely, and as we spoke, as the presentation ended, and the vote ended, a press release was sent out, citing the unanimous vote of the council. And we will absolutely do that, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
On a totally unrelated note, last week, as many of you know, I was not here because I was attending another event, which I'll get down to in regular reports, but of course, I watched the meeting and have an idea of what was going on, and I just want to go on record to saying that I've really been wholeheartedly against doing anything additional to bring marijuana distributors, stores, whatever they call themselves, to the city of Commerce City. I think if we're going to have a quality community for a lifetime, and that's what we say we're going to do, and that's what we should do, and so I do realize how procedures work, and the only way that that could come back to the floor, to the floor for another discussion or vote, would be if any of the five members who voted against it would be willing to concede and come back, huh?
Voted for, not against.
I'm sorry, the voted for, yes, that's what I meant, because I understand that the vote was five to three, and even if I would have been here, it would have still been five to four, so I'm just asking if any of the five that voted the other way, that voted for it, would be willing to bring it back up for another discussion, or if the attorney Gaylor would offer me any extra assistance on how, I think that's proper procedure, is that correct?
It does take a motion to reconsider made by someone from the prevailing side. Now, if you remember, that was an ordinance that banned marijuana, and the motion for the ordinance failed, so therefore, the ban did not go into effect.
Right.
So it would take a motion made by someone that voted against that ordinance to bring it back for reconsideration, but we're not here for discussion of that.
Right, I'm just, right, I'm just asking.
You're just stating your position.
I'm stating on the record what my vote would have been, I would have been the fourth, to the five to three, I would have been the fourth, and I'm just asking if any of the five that voted for it would be willing to bring it back up in the future.
Mr. Bullock?
Uh, mine was on the gentleman's discussion on that request for proposal. In Jerry's remarks, what he said about sending out a request for proposal, and then bringing it to the council after we got a request back, I would be wholeheartedly for that, because I think that would be the best idea to go to see what the market value is before we even have a study session item on it, because we basically really don't know where we stand markedly, because we've only had one person that's been interested or come forward about the golf course.
Okay, so going back to what I was saying, you are not having any of the five? That was a nice derail, weren't they? But that's okay.
Okay. Ms. Peter?
Well, I was one that voted yes for the protection of the player, so I would not be able to do this, but when you put in, factor in that Aurora just banned these establishments along with the county, I think more and more are going to try to come into our speed.
And with that, the county just coming down with their major being on, you know, reading the details of that, my concern is that they're going to look to the cities that have little looser regulations, and I just don't want us to be one of them. So I'm going to take it by the silence, but there is a tendency of the five willing, so I just want to go on record to saying that that's what my vote would have been, and that's where my heart lies. Thanks.
I did have my, my eye on to that discussion. If Councilwoman Snyder is still passionate about this issue, that she would like it to bring up for reconsideration, I will. My vote is not going to change. I felt we had a healthy debate on this subject. I feel that our community is sufficiently protected with the current ordinance we have in place, those medical marijuana facilities being relegated to industrial areas, nowhere near schools, nowhere near churches, nowhere near residences. If you would like to go on record, I will bring that up for reconsideration.
Well, I think if I could just, I'm basically going on record now, right, and if you're not going to change this vote, and even with the other four R's, then there really would be no point in doing that. I do appreciate you being willing to do that, pardon, Councilman Moreno, but as long as I've been able to have my say in it and go on record as what I, how I feel about it, without having to go through all that again, since you wouldn't want to change your vote, you know, then I would respectfully just enter that as my feeling towards it, and then go from there. So thank you for that.
I appreciate you sharing your thoughts on it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Benson?
This is related to the golf course issue. I don't know exactly how the RFP process works, and how you word those things, but it needs to be worded, kind of like an auction, where there's a reserve price, and we don't have to, where we just look at these and say, oh, this is a, together.
If I may, make an observation, this is not a legal issue exactly, but it does entail some legal consequences. It seems to me, normally, normally, when you go out on an RFP, it's an indication that you're interested in doing whatever you're asking the RFP for, otherwise you've got enterprises out there preparing a response to you, and the publicity that goes with it may not be exactly what you want. It sounds like you're trying to sell a golf course, and I'm not so sure that's the message you want to portray, so sending out an RFP, regardless of the disclaimers you put in and so forth, the bottom line is still, you're asking for a proposal to take over the golf course, and I think you have to weigh that in making your decision here. It almost seems like if somebody is serious about making an offer, they can come in and make their offer, and then you can send out your request for proposal. If you get a serious offer that the city manager feels is, is complete, then you can proceed with the request for proposal to see if you're getting fair market return. with the request for proposal to see if you're getting fair market return on what you've received, but I'll see what the city manager has to say.
Let me, let me be very clear to the council, mayor council. There has never been a request to purchase golf courses. It's only to take over the vending and the service, and so it's only to buy basically the operations, it's not to own the land. They've never offered to buy the land. I think the thought of a request for information would be more of a very shallow discussion, a proposal from a company that might want to give a proposal of how their numbers would look, a forward discussion. And that's where, but then it wouldn't necessarily be, we're going to be doing this and we're actually moving this direction, it would be more of a, of a, we're testing the water to see what type of information's out there.
Well, that was my only concern, sir. If I could have an RFP, it would be an indication that we wanted to sell it, or at least at some point, if I could get that idea, so maybe before any RFP goes out, I would presume that the council would have to vote on that.
All right. Any place near that? There was a relative of a past mayor that actually had come before council with a bid to purchase the golf course, maybe three or four years ago. The council voted on it, and there'd be no difference at this time.
I just keep hearing these rumors, and I just wanted to find out what the action.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, do you have a comment on this?
Yeah, and I think Mr. Flannery spoke to me, I didn't hear a motion about RFPs, I was confused about that direction of question. If, this may is a matter that if the council wants to pursue that, it would be an appropriate discussion for us in a planning retreat, and it's part of our strategic goal setting. I don't think we're invincible that session now, so I think we'll listen if we still want.
Thank you, sir.
As we have a discussion, I think that's, that's appreciated. Mr. Moreno?
Just to complement Mr. Macklin's comments, obviously, we are along the way out from ever so listening to RFP on the golf course. But I do think that in terms of strategic planning or perhaps a study item, researching the fiscal solvency of the golf course isn't an appropriate subject for this council to look at, so, but obviously, as Mr. Macklin said, that's the topic for a retreat of some kind.
Okay, reports and looking, I don't remember that. I don't have any, I don't have anybody's name up there, Mr. Benson. Mr. Benson, may I add? I'm with the city council, Aaron, in executive session for purposes of discussing a personal matter presented to CRS 4-6-402 sub four sub, yeah. Mr. Gaylor, I'm not at all familiar with how we would go over. Well, the motion has been made, and if there's a second and a vote, then I'll have some points that I want to make with the city council in the executive session, if the motion passes. But at this point, the motion's been made, if it receives a second, then it's appropriate to take a vote, we'll see where we go from there. The issue that may be in some of your minds is that it was not posted as an item for action tonight, but in view of the fact that, and I'll be advising of this in the executive session also, that no action or discussion can take place regarding the topic in this, I mean, in the open meeting, regarding the topic of this executive session, because there's been no notice given of the item for discussion in the open meeting. Now, if the executive session is held and you have a discussion, and then you come out, take no action on it, do not discuss it, then there's no objection to just moving on with the next item, because there was now a requirement for posting something that you didn't discuss in the open meeting. So that's not the problem. The problem that I'll discuss with you in the, in the executive session is whether or not the topic qualifies as an executive session item, but we'll take that up when I hear more about what the topic is. Okay, so the motion is second. Mr. Moreno?
I was going to second, but considering that we, under the legal counsel of Mr. Gaylor, we don't seem to have a problem, I'll find that.
Okay, so the motion is second. Now I need a vote, voice or roll? Voice is going to be enough, okay? All those in favor signify by the same line?
Aye.
All those opposed the same? Okay, motion passes. We can execute session now before reports, is that correct? Correct, and I would assume this would take how long? Fifteen minutes?
Say twenty, if it's eight.
Twenty minutes. Okay, let's get this thing to that end roll. Right, the executive session, we'll be back after the meeting. We're going to go to reports. Okay, at the executive session, there was no action to be taken. We're going to go into reports, and due to the hour, if we could keep reports centered on the city only, that would be greatly appreciated. Mr. Flannery, why don't we start with you?
I know it's going to be a shocker, no report.
Oh, all right. We're going to take for granted, Mr. Gaylor, is no report. Mr. Macklin?
No report.
Mr. Ture?
The only reason I'm going to report this is because Brittany wanted me to, but I had a flight over the weekend, and I called campaign darkening, and I was asking questions, and they recognized my name as being on council. And I asked the gentleman, he lived in Cheyones, and his question to me was, "Why aren't we giving a supermarket? Why aren't we getting a supermarket?" And the only thing I could share with him, I might have an answer come Monday, so, and also, I asked him how many people worked there from Commerce City, and he said, "Many." So that was a good thing that they hired us in the city. Thank you.
Um, yes, just a couple of things. That week, of course, I attended the senior forum, want to thank all the seniors that took their time and the staff to come out and talk to us. I thought it was productive, and that we're working together collectively, and I have enough of some ideas to make things better, have a little line of communication open. I just want to thank everyone that was a part of that. Secondly, last Monday night, I was not here because I was attending a group called The Cell, and Governor Bitter, Mayor Vickelinger, and several people from across the country, a few from Department of Homeland Security in Washington came down. And what that is, is it's the Counterterrorism Education Learning Lab, and it's a long name, but we shortened it to The Cell, and it's a lot of presentation about where things are at with all terrorism, domestic, international, everything that's happening, and it falls in the vein of the Public Safety Crack Prevention Committee that I stood on. And so I found it to be very interesting and a good learning experience, and I will be coming forward in the near future, beginning of the year, with a report from what came out of the last Public Safety Crack Prevention meeting. So just want to let everyone know that I appreciated having the last Monday off in order to attend that downtown, and there was about five hundred people there, so it's a pretty big attendance. Thanks, and I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Mr. President?
I just wanted to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and happy and safe to all.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, my students also attended the senior forum, I want to commend Mr. Moreno and Mr. Snyder for their handling of their experience a year ago. But again, we got a lot of input from our senior citizens, and I will put some of the things that were said, we take to the heart, and maybe some things will be done about those things. Once the, I had a doctor copy in downtown, and right before that meeting, I got a call from my alarm company saying that my alarm had gone off at my house, so that I had to set off the alarm. The police had to go out there and figure out that it was a neighbor who went in and closed my garage door, and walked out of my side garage door and set off the alarm, so. I guess that happens, I, when I relate this to other people, they say, "Yeah, that happened to me last year," because it happens a lot. So now I think it's a matter of, you have motion, set the motion detector, and if nobody's inside of their house, the motion detector's not going to be working. The motion detector goes off, even though somebody's in there, so anyway, that was, I really, I apologize to the police officers who were involved, and there was any cost associated with that, you know, it would be enough, so. We did have a doctor copy, not much concerned Commerce City, not in that meeting. Saturday, I went on the Christmas lights tour that was conducted by, is that the Historical Society, Deveraux, okay, by Deveraux and the Historical Society, we went up north, went around down here, probably saw several really nice Christmas light displays all over the city, all, all personnel. This morning, I attended a meeting over tasty donuts, I think most of us were aware of that situation, and I don't know what resolution of this one would be, it was a problem about the restroom, not having a restroom. I'm not sure that the restroom is the only issue. I know that's, it's a business that we would like to keep there, and a lot of people that are used to going there and getting a donut and having a coffee. And I think our meeting is going to be set up with representatives of the city, representatives of tri-county health, and other stakeholders to find out what, if anything, can be done to salvage that business. I'm not sure that it can be out with him. I have no football courses, I've got any football games, I'm just a physical arena generator to him, and I wish everyone a, would you shut up for a second? Can we keep it to city business? Yes, we can, we can. You waste more time talking about this than I do making a official ten-second statement. Mr. Benson, stop wasting time. Stop wasting time. I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you. Mr. Moreno?
Mr. Mayor, do you have a Christmas gift to you, Mr. Mayor, or the front?
You are a wonderful person.
Mr. Macklin? I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Thank you, staff, and the head, and, or staff, for putting on a beard, just a common word, a common prayer, and thank you particularly to the, to the citizens of Congress, much Monday nights, thanks for being out there all the nights, and thank you to the rest of council, Merry Christmas to you.
Ture?
Yes, Merry Christmas to all, and all of your family.
Mr. Mayor, I'm your council report.
I say Merry Christmas to all that are out there, all that are watching, and thank you to staff for all that you do, and I hope that everybody has a joyous Christmas and a really great New Year, because I'm kind of hard, no meetings until next year.
Yes, please, don't make anybody show up on your meeting. Mr. Kane, I've heard a business coming for this hour, for a chair. Thank you.